I'd like to call the Budget Committee meeting to order. Could we have our pledge leaders come forward, please? Our pledge allegiance leaders, come on board. Right up here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold up, who are these young people?
I was gonna say, thank you. This is, my name is Chris Snyder, I'm the principal from Bakersfield Elementary School, and we are fortunate to have our student council, all thirteen of our fourteen members here tonight, they're all fourth and fifth grade students representing our school. So they're recently elected, they've had a few meetings, and we have some certificates to give them. If it's okay. And I feel you went on the one member who is not here, she was unfortunately ill today, couldn't be at school, but if you were here at our last meeting when we were here, Carrie Cavallaro came and talked about her idea of care bags. She was also elected to student council, and I just wanted to give an update that several items have been donated, there, she's collected them all from school now, and she's continuing to work with the police department to get canned goods, but she's connected with an organization called ORIS out of Manchester, New Hampshire, their website is refugeesuccess.org. So, in the coming weeks, all of these items that have been donated will be collected and delivered there with the assistance of the sheriff's department. So, that's been a big success too, she regrets that she couldn't be here, but I'm glad that the rest of our student council could be here today. So I have your certificates, so I'll call your names if you guys want to come this way, and then we can move forward with our meeting. All right, so Jesse Cavalo. Maya Dosti. Adriana Giordina. Ally. Amari Mills. Elizabeth Ranger. Tyler Rigo. Lucas Shrumf. Roger Susi. George Frasolo. Aiden Walton. And Yvonne White. I failed to mention that Ms. Finneberg, one of our first grade teachers, is here tonight too, she is also our student council leader.
The Budget Committee, the school board's going to convene in just a moment, the Budget Committee is seated with its members, except one member is missing, Jim Doggett is not here today, and we have a report from our Kingston Subcommittee, Maura.
Yeah, there was, we decided to reconvene to revote, there seemed to be some controversy over a member for a vacancy from Kingston with whether or not the at-large member should or should not have voted, and on the Subcommittee, we decided to take a revote where the at-large member recused herself from the vote. We decided we didn't want this to have any bearing on the future or to take away from what we're trying to do, so we decided to take a revote, we're not saying that what we did should or shouldn't have happened, but we just didn't want it to take away from anything else, so we unanimously voted Vanessa Matias for the Kingston seat.
Do you want to motion, just your Subcommittee meeting, or do you want to do that next meeting?
Can I motion it?
Sure.
Okay, all right, motion to accept the minutes from the Subcommittee meeting? Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Can we have a discussion?
Any discussion?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay. That's your answer. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you.
In the minutes, in the first paragraph it says Cheryl offers to change the four candidates. I didn't want to change the four candidates, I wanted to add the names of the four candidates. It's just a little bit confusing, I don't want people to think I was changing who was the candidates, so I wanted to amend, change the four candidates, and add the statement, add to the statement, change the four candidates, and enter the four names of the candidates to be, and they are, as they are listed in the minutes.
So, are you further? Then, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call a school board meeting to order. First, action on the minutes.
Voter approved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? There is no communications, the manifest, I think, has already been signed. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, I just wanted to acknowledge to the public that we did have a short notice need for approval for the Waterville Valley field trip for the high school, and the board did vote unanimously to approve that field trip through virtual means, and so for the purpose of public notification, we wanted to make sure that that was noted in the minutes. So, thank you very much, they had a great trip. Second, I just wanted everyone to know that we, really interesting because it's timely that we have the NASDAQ results for our current enrollments came back, and sure enough, exactly congruent with what they predicted based on their initial analysis two years ago, we are down by thirty students. So, again, for those folks who are skeptical about the reorganization or the purpose of the reorganization or the credibility of the NASDAQ study, it was exactly spot on. And it's not as if it's a specific number of students at any one grade level, it's kind of sprinkled right throughout the grades just as we anticipated. The kindergarten prediction was almost exactly on, I think it was eighty, I'm estimating eighty-four, eighty-five students, and we had eighty some odd students enroll, pretty amazing. So that's where it's the hardest, is pre-K and K, because you're reaching into the ether to find out what's in the, you know, live births, people living in the communities, that, those are, you know, the numbers in kindergarten four years from now are the hardest to see. So, the trend in New Hampshire for declining enrollments continues. In terms of the reorganization, I just wanted everyone to know that we are working very, very hard to do really three facets of the reorganization. One is, we have begun our parent focus groups, and they have gone very, very well, we're very highly attended, and my favorite quote of the parent focus groups was, oh my goodness, I didn't, I've never been through Bakersfield before, or I've never been to Memorial, so if anything, just seeing the other buildings kind of shed, loosened up some anxiety for parents that had never even been in the schools before. So that really helped the lower elementary folks, and the folks in grade seven through twelve in the focus group really appreciated getting a tour and having an opportunity to ask questions, and the administration is taking a look at some of those questions, and we will have another meeting after the holiday break. So I think it's also really important to recognize that we are working really hard to figure out the staffing layout, as you can imagine, that's a really tedious process, and the other part is that Mr. Angel is working really hard with architects to begin the physical construction, we're very, very close to starting the main office right down the hall for the middle school, and right behind that will be the plans for the bathroom, and we're really looking forward to getting that, personally, I would like that part done because that's where you can run into glitches with money, right? When you start adding water in bathrooms and things, I just, I'll feel way better when that's done. So it's going very, very well, but I just want everyone to know that there may be a hole in the wall down the hall here very shortly, and construction will start, so we're really right on the cusp of starting that. Other than that, the SAU office in particular, and the team in general, has been very focused on budget work, and that's really, this whole presentation is a superintendent's report, so I'll be sharing more in just a moment.
Policy committee.
We met tonight, and we finally finished reviewing the code of ethics policies, we will have about fifteen or twenty policies for the board to look at at our next meeting. That was tonight, and our next meeting, policies next meeting is December 4th, 4:45 PM in room 102 of the high school, and I hope people will join us.
Education.
The Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met on October 16th, in attendance, myself, Mrs. Alessio, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Superintendent Ambrose, Dr. Heans, Ms. Levitt, Mr. Dawson, and Mr. Stack. Available performance data for the high school was discussed, including PSAT and PACE scores. The lower grade PACE scores are not yet available from the New Hampshire Department of Education, they're taking longer this year to return to us. PSAT testing had actually taken place earlier that day for grades nine through eleven, and the district should have those results in December. Ms. Levitt reported that the seniors used that day for career path exploration, which included an option for field trips to Southern New Hampshire University and Manchester Community College. A full busload of students opted for this, and they actually told us they could have probably done a second bus if they had received enough permission slips back in time, so it was pretty, pretty well-received, well-attended, that field trip, and it offered them an opportunity to tour the two campuses. The district expects that they will continue this practice because it was so well-received, the students got a lot out of that. PACE scores highlight the need for improvement and intervention in every area, the benchmark score is three, however, all areas which were tested average lower. Math is already an identified area in need of critical improvement, which is supported by these test results. Two point two percent of math one and sixteen point two seven percent of math two students meant the benchmark score of three. Mr. Stack reported that a math interventionist has begun targeting ninth and tenth graders in need of assistance to assess how to help them meet the benchmarks. The NEWA testing will be a primary diagnostic tool, as it helps in pinpointing areas of weakness. A reading interventionist has been identified and will begin work similarly. The committee also continued our discussion of goals for the school year, since math is a critical focus for the district, one goal will encompass the objective of developing a plan to improve math instruction, with another to develop year-end benchmarks for grade levels K through six math. District would also like to explore a new grade reporting system, and determine what and how much information is important for inclusion in that. These will be, these goals will be presented for adoption at our next committee meeting. We just, we had a discussion of the portrait of a graduate also, prior to the presentation that we received at our last meeting. Our next meeting is on November, two weeks from today, November, oops, I just lost my, my document just went fluey on me, two weeks from today.
November 20th.
The 20th, it's actually on the 21st, it's two weeks plus a day because our next meeting is a joint meeting with the Budget Committee, which is on a Thursday instead of a Wednesday, so, thank you. 4:30, room 120.
Facilities.
Facilities met this afternoon, we reviewed the reserve fund balances, which were pretty much the same as at the last report, so I'm not going to get into the numbers, save the time to do that. We also reviewed a number of architectural proposals that we've been working on, and narrowed it down to three firms, which we think would be qualified. We've asked for some additional information as far as projects that they've, that they've done, and costs of projects, so we can sort of compare them as far as expenses going forward, and also what are called contract, contract rate sheets, so we know what their hourly rates are for, also for evaluating them on a cost basis.
Next meeting.
And the next meeting is December 4th at 3:45 in room 102.
Finance.
Finance hasn't met since our last board meeting, and we have a meeting scheduled for November 21st at 3:45.
At 3?
3:45.
Public relations.
Public relations has a meeting a week from today, on the November 13th at 4:30.
Personnel.
Personnel meets on November 13th at 5:00 PM.
You've got now, nothing seminar, okay, budget.
Budget, we met, what was it, seven? Two weeks ago. My computer just went blank. We had a question and answer section, which we got answers from Mr. Angel, and we also had a member, well, we went and talked over the, on my mind issue.
Guidelines.
Thank you very much.
Proposed guidelines.
Guidelines for setting up the Budget Committee. Next meeting will be, what it looks like here, will be November 21st, right here at 6 o'clock. 7 o'clock, it's Thursday.
Question?
Thank you, Annie.
I have a question. I was not able to make that meeting, but I was watching the video, and I was surprised to hear some discussion at that regarding a legal opinion that you obtained.
Yes, I did.
On behalf of the board, I don't remember authorizing you to do that.
I did not ask for authorization, I went to the Attorney General. The Attorney General.
I think you mentioned you went to our legal.
I went to the Attorney General, got permission and a policy on how to do it.
Didn't you mention Mr. Shaughnessy's name?
Nope, because I went right straight to the superintendent as I was directed, from him to the school board chair, and from him to the lawyer. That was the direction I was told to go.
We can, we can discuss it in non-public, because it's a legal issue.
Okay.
Okay, I think that was that. Erin, how you doing?
I'm great, how are you?
All right, Erin wasn't here last week, you went to Job Shadow.
Yeah, so the student council, a couple weeks ago, we had our Kindness Matters Week, which is, this is our first year of doing it, so it was basically just a week where you emphasized, like, everyone being kind, and not bullying and everything, so we started out with Monday, was everyone has a name day, because in like, a school with so many students, you don't have, know everyone's name, and it's kind of hard to start a discussion with them, especially once you've been going to school with them, so we had people wear name tags for that day, and you had to try to like, talk to somebody new, and then that followed into the next day, which is Mix It Up Day, so we encouraged people to sit with everyone, with different people at lunch, and if they wrote down who they sat with, and turned it into a few members of the student council, they got like, a little piece of candy, and then for the rest of the week, we had, if you noticed coming in, there was a giant banner right in the atrium that said kindness matters, and we had random acts of kindness, so kids had to write down on little stickiness, random acts of kindness that they witnessed throughout the day, and stick it on there, and then at the end of the week, our advisor chose a winner, and they got a small prize. So that actually went really well, and we're going to continue doing that, like, we're not going to have more weeks, but we have other little kindness activities that are going to continue on throughout the year. And then tomorrow, the student council is going up to Waterville Valley for the state, statewide student council leadership conference, so that's going to be exciting.
Thank you. Public comments. I know this is the first one, I've got a lot to do, but is it ready? New business. You're up. This is now going to be in the budget presentation.
We have a short, short video to kind of get us started, and Gordon, Gordon will start the video, and for those of you in the back, if you can't see, go ahead and read the slides, please feel free to come forward a little bit, it's kind of fun to see. So, if you could pull up this first slide, I'll be making that available, it's a little video, so we'll just go on YouTube so it can be shared, but we kind of thought it was fun to take a look at things through a different lens, because we, we talk often about what we don't do, but we don't always talk about what we, what we do. This is fascinating to think about, the one that really got me was the square feet of floor that get cleaned, you know, the building space that gets cleaned, million, couldn't believe it, I had checked that a lot, checked and rechecked that one, and then the other one that was fascinating was the bus routes, you know, 1,100 miles a day, so we basically go to Florida every three days. It's fascinating, so it's just really interesting, the volume of, we're a small district, but we still, there's still a lot happening, and it really, the emails were over the summer, so you could triple that over the school year, but I could only get Google to give me a spreadsheet for the past six months, so I had to just take what I could get for that. But we'll update it again in the future, so it's just kind of a fun way to think about it, but when you think about it, you know, we do a lot, and so, I thought that would kind of frame the budget, but my favorite slide was the last one, and I have to say that, of all the places I've ever worked, the definition of student success that our school board adopted last year is the best, accurate document for tracking student success. And for those of you who are here this evening, if you haven't read that document, it's right on our website, and I highly recommend that you read it, but to see that last slide of forty-nine percent of our students having post-secondary aspirations go up to ninety percent is phenomenal, and I really couldn't be more grateful for the hard work of the people who have made that happen, both on the board, the BudCon, and in the community, and at the high school, but really, K8 feeds that, so without K8, it's everyone that makes that happen, so, thank you. So this should hopefully not, I know I'm not a particularly concise speaker, but I don't think this will be a long presentation. So, the first thing that we always do when we create a budget is we look at enrollments. So these enrollments are set up to give you a sense, because we're reorganizing, of where the students will be in terms of their enrollments, so these are as of October 1st, 2019, so certainly for 2021, we just move everyone forward one year, and kind of hope that kindergarten and pre-K come in with our best guess estimate. So I gave you where they were on October 1st. Oh, and I'll give you your budget books in just a moment, but it's really important as a teacher for me to have your attention to hear what I'm saying and go through these, all of these slides are in paper form in your budget book, and you'll have that in just a minute. So, I just wanted to give everyone a quick overview about what the plan is for 2020 to 2021, and 21 to 2022. With the reorganization of the district, our goal for this, from now until September 1st of 2020, is to prepare the high school for the seventh and eighth grade, and move everyone into their new places in pre-K. That is all-consuming work, it's basically all that we do, aside from anything else that arises that requires immediate attention, because it's such a huge process. We will fund any academic support that we can in year one, but the capital needs have to come first, and all I'm doing is recapping what I said last spring, to, so that everyone has it available in their budget books, and just kind of, I'm rewinding us back to last April for just a minute here, and then I'll move forward. We are very optimistic at this point that the capital costs will be fine, but we never know when we get into physical building changes. In year two, 21, 2021 to 2022, we'll be fully funding the academic intervention in grades pre-K through eight, and reduce all other staff. Based on the plan, this should result in savings to the taxpayers by lowering the budget, and fund the rest of the academic support, and fulfilling the plan the board approved in the spring of 2019. All aspects of this plan are estimates. I've had a few people come to me and say, well, you said you would do this, you said you would do that, I have said that everything's an estimate, from day one, and every slide says estimate. I just want to remind everyone of that, because it's easy to rethink, Tom said this, and my favorite thing is Tom said, Tom said, Tom said, Tom said, well, Tom wrote it down, because that makes it easy, then there's no Tom said, so sometimes when I talk with staff or students, I say, don't leave the room and do a Tom said, and they, they like that, they think that's kind of funny, that was supposed to be a joke, I'm sorry. Little nervous, so, all aspects of this plan are estimates, so it's really important, I did, this, these slides will be shared on the web, and that link is live, and it has all the videos from last spring and all the documents. Now, it's really important to recognize that the business administrator this year, in 1920, has carefully worked with every administrator to sequester some money that may go to the capital needs in the reorganization process, but that's only provided that everything else goes smoothly. It is November, the first week of November. Last year I had to freeze the budget for one reason, the year before we did it for another reason, this money's kind of just in a holding pattern, but it still exists in the budget. Considering that it's early November, we really don't know if we'll be able to use those funds for the transition, but we're hopeful, because if we are, it means that we'll be able to give more back to taxpayers in the future, and fund intervention sooner. We're working diligently to prepare for this reorganization, we've identified two staff positions through attrition, that we did remove for the budget in 2020 to 2021. All other staff changes will be announced on March 15th for professional staff, and May 1st for paraprofessionals. It's important to note that all staff assignments are subject to change based on the needs of the district.
A question?
Nope, gotta wait, let me get through the whole thing, I'll take them after, thank you, and we're not doing questions tonight, tonight is a presentation, questions are due on the 15th. All right, so here we go, here's the slide from the original middle school, high school transition plan. Key considerations. I'm just bringing you back to last spring and showing you what I said last spring, so that we're, we have a frame of reference for what I'm going to present in a moment. I initially said that you would save $7,502 in year one of the reorganization, I'm not going to go through every line, I've done that in detail, you can go to the web and watch that information, it's all right there, no need to go over it again, you all know. Year two, we would save $748,000 for the middle school move, which includes the closure of the plant, and reductions in staff. In the elementary schools, my initial slide said that it would cost us $18,000 to fund academic intervention, so we would save $658,000, and we would spend $676,000, these are just, I just literally copied and pasted my slides from last spring, so this is, you can find them online here, or you'll be able to find them in the reconfiguration slides. slides. The total estimated cost analysis by the end of twenty-one, twenty-two, not including one-time costs for high school facilities modifications for middle school students, in the end, we would spend, we would save six hundred and fifty-eight thousand on the elementary reorganization. The middle school reorganization, we would save seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. This is at the end of 2022, two years from now, because we have to pay for the capital costs first. The total annual expenses, not including but not limited to literacy and math support, was nine hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred, which is a savings to the community, an estimate of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Okay? So now, come back to today, we're developing the budget this year. Well, I just want to say that things were going very well with our reorganization plans. So Mr. Angel and I and the administrative team met, and this is what we've come up In the 2021 proposed operating budget, out of the four hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred that I outlined, that you would possibly save at the end of 2022, we have decided to reduce two staff members and savings from the middle school closure to the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-two cents. There are some costs for the movement of the central office location and anticipation of the middle school coming to the high school. So the net savings in, in the proposed operating budget that you're about to see in a moment is two hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and six cents, which means that over the next two years, we anticipate another hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-four cents to be saved. So basically what I'm saying to you is we're giving you some return on this investment today. Okay? And I'll talk about how and why in just a moment. The default budget is the first step in the process. Mr. Angel and I talked at length about whether or not the default budget would be adequate to fund this process, and we felt that it was not, but let me explain that process first. The default budget per New Hampshire RSA is calculated as follows. It's the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous year, which will be outlined on the next slide. And then it is reduced and increased by debt service, contracts, and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, which is outlined in slide fifteen. You'll see that in just a minute. This is then reduced by one-time expenditures, which are defined as planned one-time expenditures. There's been a lot of questions about that. I want to be clear that if Mr. Angel sequesters money this year and use it to move the district forward, that is not a planned one-time expenditure per law. I just want to put that to rest right now. We're working really hard to save you money, we don't need to spend a bunch of time in a washing machine answering the same question, does that count as a one-time expense? It does not. Reduced by salaries and benefits of positions that have been eliminated in the proposed budget. So in our initial conversation, we have a, the calculation of the default budget is pretty, pretty straight ahead, it's a formula. The operating budget would be three hundred and, thirty-five million, six hundred and eighteen dollars, six hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Say that again really, really fast. Thirty-five million, six hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty, plus the professional staff collective bargaining agreement at five hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-four, support staff collective bargaining agreement of eighty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-three, and the Sanborn Ice Hockey Team. Go Sanborn! So there's some debate about whether or not that warrant article was Sanbornized. We included it, because the intent of the voters was clear that this was to be added to our budget, we can discuss that later. But for our calculation purposes, we put it in there. Alright, so let's go on. So that's the, the, the operating, the prior year adopted operating budget was thirty-six million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. Mr. Baker, don't break your pencil lead, because you're going to get a book in a minute with all the slides. I'm just joking with you, Jim. I just see you writing notes, I, I know. Alright, so here we go. Jeez, everyone's so like, am I, alright, I won't joke anymore, I'm sorry. My wife said if they don't laugh, tell them you're kidding, because your humor's way too dry and everyone feels uncomfortable. And my life got a lot better after she taught me that. I did, I do listen to her a lot. So, so the calculation of the default budget, you can see here, I'm not going to read every one of these numbers, but the total debt service contracts and other obligations, four hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. I'm not, the board is not adopting the default budget this evening, but I'm sharing with you what the calculation is and what it will be that the board will consider when they adopt the, um, the default budget. So here it is. The default budget would be three, thirty-six million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-three cents. And, and sometime in December, the board will consider that, ask Mr. Angel questions, and it's highly likely and typical that the board would adopt, the school board would adopt a default budget. So, Mr. Angel and I met and we felt that this wasn't going to work for us. And it was pretty complicated and a lot of back and forth and conversations, so this is kind of like the drum roll moment, right? Everyone's wondering what I'm going to say next, so I'll just tell you. We came up with much less. So initially, we thought that the default budget was going to be three, thirty-six million, around thirty-six million nine hundred thousand. I'm estimating, I'm using what I call Ambrose math. So two teaching positions plus the hundred thousand for the middle school, roughly put it at thirty-seven million. We were like, there's no way we're putting that forward as a default budget, we can do better than that, because things are going so well with the reorganization plans. The operating budget, we felt was too high still, so we lowered it to thirty-six million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-eight cents, which is a net increase of point five-three percent. I'm asking you all to please accept this. We worked really, really hard to get this this low for you. We cannot do it with less. As I explained to Ms. Collier in a very animated phone call, walking around my backyard at five-thirty or six on a Friday night, "No." Was pretty much what I said, nicely. I don't say no often, I usually say something like, "I don't really know if I can do that," or some other, you know, leader terminology that makes it sound all smooth and cool, not really, but. I do say to Annie, I'm very frank with Annie when we talk about things as the BudCon chair, and I just said, the budgets aren't going to be identical, but honestly, when we dug into this, we found some room for things that we, I really felt like the two teaching positions we could do. And then what we did is we just whittled down a bunch of lines and things that we were concerned about, that we felt like that we could, so for example, you'll notice in the, in the, there's a, I just want to point out one philosophical question people are going to have for me. Why are you cutting books in the library for this year, when all you talk about is getting books in the hands of kids? And I'll tell you why. I reduced the library lines for one year for one reason. The K-3 school is going to inherit a tremendous amount of textbooks from the Bakey School. Bakey's going to get sixth grade texts from the middle school, and this library is going to inherit all the books from grade seven and eight. I don't think they're going to need to buy more, I think they're going to need to catalog what they have. Those came out for this year. When we reorganize and we have savings from staffing reductions, we'll then realign those lines later on. So I want everyone to understand that what I've done is I've whittled down everything that I felt like I could, while maintaining enough flexibility in the event that we have an emergency with any portion of the, the reconfiguration. I, I, I'm nervous. We're building bathrooms, we're building a, a school within a school for kids with no contingency budget, no real contingency budget in the sense that many superintendents would ask for a couple of million dollars in reserve for emergencies, we don't have that. So I'm telling you that if anyone is, wants to talk about reducing this any further, I would have grave concerns about that. We have whittled and whittled and whittled for, for days on end. And kudos to Matt and frankly Marie Mundy, she did a great job, because she found an extra point four percent two days before I presented this, like, two, two, last Wednesday. She went through some more things and dug in even deeper and anticipating your questions as a board in BudCon. Marie did a fantastic job and Matt and, and the whole team at Central Office, I couldn't be happier. So this is the part I assumed Jim was trying to calculate when he was writing. Tax impacts, tax impacts. So, of course, you know, you recognize that our valuations are old, and we can't tell you what the valuations are going to be in the future. So what Matt likes to say is, this is a complete shot in the dark. Is that pretty accurate, Matt? I mean, this, this amount is really, truly not real, because we don't know what the valuation's going to be in another year. We don't know what the revenues are going to be, so we're giving you a best guess estimate. So the tax rate on a three hundred thousand dollar home would be five thousand two hundred and fifty-nine in Kingston for the default, and five thousand two hundred and five on the, uh, uh, operating. Newton, six thousand six hundred and forty-two, and six thousand five hundred and seventy-three. So there's a couple of things that I want you all to know. Uh, I, I'm only speaking to this because it's come up on Facebook so much, so I'm just going to say it so everyone hears it. There is a plan, and I said this last spring, I, I haven't gone back and watched all the videos, because I hate hearing myself speak on a video, but what I said was that there is a need at the Memorial School for the security entrance to be, the entrance to be moved to the front of the building. And that's been a, a need that's been outlined for four or five years, way before I was hired. The original proposal for that was two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I went over and worked with our team and whittled it down to sixty thousand dollars. I am very confident that we are going to be able to fund that next year in, with the reductions and the reorganization. However, that would come last, after the high school's done. So Matt is going to work with Mr. Angel, our business administrator is going to work with folks to start drawing up plans. It really is a matter of, of, of just adding some doors and, and creating some flow in the area that we want to place the office. I really hope that we can get that done before we move the building, because it's easier to move it with it done than to move everyone and then do it again. And Mr. McCarthy and I spoke at length about it one day recently. And so, it's important, right? But I just need you to know that there's a difference between it being valued and important and being necessary. It's not necessary to move, to reorganize the district, but it's very important. What we had talked about when I initially made this plan was that we would probably fund it in year two, because there would be more savings in year two, but I think we, we're, it's possible we can do it in year one during 2021. The other question that has come up is about the, uh, there's a lot of questions about my comments at a board meeting a few weeks ago that, that kind of took on a life of their own regarding school security officers. And I just want to be clear with everyone that, that, that is a philosophical debate that needs to occur in the communities, but there have been some developments that may provide a security officer at the Newton campus. I cannot share that with you at this time, because those negotiations are confidential and ongoing. As soon as I have more information, I will share that with you. Okay? So I want everyone to know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to fund that without costing us a penny. And I had some creative ideas come to me and just kind of land in my, my office through various conversations, and that's all I can say about it today. I, I do want to be clear with everyone that it's my feeling that there is a, uh, there is a philosophical divide as to whether or not it is necessary to provide safety at K-3 or K-4, 5, 6 schools. So it is very important to me that the community decides whether or not that gets funded. And so, it, whether it's a parent initiative, or I put it in my budget and we debate it, it has to wait. I just, we don't have the capacity to deal with that right now. The, the capacity is focused on getting this move done. I need everyone to understand, I am completely reorganizing an entire school district in one year with no contingency budget. That's, that's enough work to do for now. Once that's done and we see where everything, the dust literally settles out, then we can have a conversation. But I just want everyone to know that I, I would like to see some kind of, um, security presence at the Newton campus, just because it's in a different location than the high school. The high school has a resource officer that can, can get to Bakey very quickly. The safety committee is discussing this, and, or the superintendent's safety advisory team, to be exact, is discussing this. And that, there'll be more to come on that in the future, so I just want everyone to know that it's, it's, it's being actively talked about. Uh, oh, and Cheryl, sorry I didn't let you ask a question earlier, but I just want to make sure everyone understands, tonight is not for question and answer. You'll receive your budget books right now, and they have everything in them that they had last year. You can take them home, take them apart, email all your questions from the BudCon to the chair, and the questions from the school board, please email them to Matt by, by Friday, the fifteenth. Friday, the fifteenth. We will answer those questions the best we can on, um, on the twenty-first at the joint meeting. And the way I have this structured is that Matt is really going to hustle hard to get all the questions answered that he can on, on Monday, and then the administrators are going to meet for the day and go through the questions and provide additional information, so that we can be as thorough as possible on the twenty-first. My hope is that this is a pretty smooth process and that you can, um, get your questions answered in a timely manner.
No clarifying questions? We are allowed to have clarifying questions?
I'm not answering any questions this evening, Cheryl. Thank you.
I wish we had known that before we came.
I've told that to everyone every time I do this presentation. But I can talk to you after. I'm happy to do that. Thank you very much, everyone. And I hope you have a good, good process looking through these books, and please, like I said, send your questions to Annie by the fifteenth. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you. Where's the trash?
This is used. Magnifying glasses.
I'm trying to keep it light, everyone's really serious.
Me too. Hey. This is budget season.
Well, I know, I know, no jokes in budget season, I should have brought cookies.
Also known as the silly season.
Yes.
Um, you want to go up there, you want to do it here?
Yeah.
Whatever you want. Okay, impact fee letter. You're going to claim what the impact fee is first, people don't know what they are.
Okay. What an impact fee is, is when there's new development in a community, that community can assess the impact of that development. Here, why don't I move down?
I would say the same thing. And who are you?
And why? Why am I? Okay, I'm, I'm going to speak to them. So, good evening, I'm Matt Angel, I'm the business administrator, and an impact fee is when a town assesses on new development, the impact of that development to, on infrastructure to a community. So Newton and Kingston collect money from new development and they, they hold it until the, uh, school district can come up with some sort of capital need related to the expansion of the school. And, um, back in two thousand and five, the, the, uh, the, uh, school district voted to build this great building. And so, the impact fee letter is authorization from the school board to draw down on impact fees from each of the member communities, okay?
Are you saying that the towns are holding that money for us, and that's why you mean by draw down?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, I think Kingston is somewhere around eighty-six thousand dollars, and Newton is around twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars. And all of this is, um, um, going to be included as revenue that reduces your tax rate. And it's for paying debt service. Okay? And all I'm asking the school board is to authorize me to release these letters tomorrow to each of the member towns, asking them to draw down the funds.
Make a motion to release the letters? Is that good, described?
Just looking, I, I always try to give a fellow a few minutes to find out who made the motion, who seconded it. Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
All right.
No brainer.
Okay, I believe the budget committee adjourns.
At this, at this point, could we have a motion to adjourn the budget committee? You're welcome to stay for the rest of the presentation, but, you know, the rest of the school board meeting, but, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Jim, second? Vanessa, all in, any discussion? All in favor?
That's unanimous.
Okay, why don't we give them?
I did not vote for that, I'm sorry.
Oh, you didn't? I'm sorry. Um, are you opposed?
Yes, I am.
Okay. But no discussion? Okay, so that would be, uh, one, two, three, four, five, five in favor, no, six in favor, one opposed.
You only have five.
Did you, did you vote for the budget committee?
I'm here, I vote with you.
Okay. Okay, that's six, six in favor, one opposed.
Why don't we take a few minutes, school board people, while they get up and move? There we go.
You feel better now?
He did it, not me. Okay. See what happens when you abdicate your responsibility, you know?
Should have given that gavel to me.
Okay. Tax impact, Matt, you're up.
Uh, the, the tax impact and the special funding update was really a, a discussion that was revolving around the four hundred thousand dollar reduction. I mean, our four hundred thousand dollar contingency fund. Unfortunately, the, the, the town in Newton set their tax rate too quickly for me. I sent out an email to the DRA asking to hold off on their tax rate setting.
I, I'm going to clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay? Because they didn't fa, do it too fast for you.
Yeah.
You sent a letter to DRA asking them to hold off. The DRA either didn't get the letter, but something, there was a snafu, so that Newton's tax rate had been set.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, it wasn't within our control.
That's correct.
Okay. Everybody, any, got any, got any questions on that, that four hundred thousand that we were going to?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
I was just going to say, just for clarification, so, this was money that was put aside, uh, with the intent that there'd be an opportunity to review that before the, uh,
Everybody, any, you got any questions on that, that $400,000 that we were gonna?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
I was just going to say, just for clarification, so this was money that was put aside, uh, with the intent that there'd be an opportunity to review that before the uh, rate setting. Through snafus, what have you, the rate setting has occurred without being able to review that.
For one town?
In Newton.
For, for Newton.
Um, exactly, I just want to be clear for people's understanding. That does not mean that that $400,000 is forfeit. That does not mean that it is uh, somehow available to be spent. That is still locked in a lockbox and it is still available for board decisions. It's just depend on when any board decision would be impactful because the rates have already been set.
Could we, could we clarify that? Just, can, I like Matt, there's actually, it's more strict than what you just described.
Okay.
So Matt, can you explain the way that you can access the money?
It's only for two purposes. The first one is, is to reduce the tax rate so that the board can release the funds to reduce the tax rate. But at this point, it would affect the tax rate for the next tax rate setting, which would be December of next year.
Yep.
The second reason is for an emergency expenditure. And, and I want to exaggerate emergency, okay? It has to be something that is unusual. It'd have to be something like a roof collapsed, okay? And, and um, it would have to have approval of the budget committee, approval of the school board, and approval of the Department of Revenue Administration.
Thank you for the clarification.
Another part to that where it not only has to be an emergency, but it has to be something that existing funds are not, can't cover? It's, it, it, the, the entire budget would be expended and then this could be?
That's right, that's the last one.
Yeah.
I think this is a good uh, learning experience for us. We, we thought we did have one more chance to use it to reduce the budget. We should have done it in June as opposed to now made a decision be before the end of the school year saying that, okay, we want to at least allocate X amount of it or whatever. Um, and I, I also thought that when we signed off on the MS25 that, that was in effect signing off on that $400, leaving it in the savings bank. Because once we said, because you had said to us, once we send these papers in, we're right in queue with DRA in order to set the rate. And so I, I did assume that we weren't going to even attempt to try and use the money so, because of that action. But it be either way.
I didn't make that assumption. I, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, well, maybe it's from past history on the board, but maybe we could put something on our board calendar that in June, we need to make a determination on any unexpendable funds and, and whether that be used to reduce the tax rate.
There's been discussions on that all.
Okay, all right, so.
Yeah, along those lines, I think what we need is a, a timeline of deadlines that need to be met at the state level and the town levels.
Oh, good point.
I, I will strongly advise the board that in the future, if we're going to choose to keep, to withhold funds for the purpose of, of uh, really the purpose is to, I, I just want the public to hear. I, we, we have worked really hard to, to be as conservative as possible and we have returned close to a million dollars to the community annually since I've been superintendent. As I tighten up this budget, that will stop happening. And if that stop, when that stops happening, you will not receive the benefit of that coming off your, your, your tax bill. So the idea of the, the money being withheld in a year when you have more is that it helps to equalize the taxation over a period of time. So you see less, less peaks and valleys in the taxation. So I, I am, Matt, Matt was beside himself last week when he reached out to DRA and thought he had it all set up to give us until this meeting to discuss it. And I told him not to blame himself. We should have decided in June, we tried to be collaborative or, or to work together to give ourselves an opportunity in September to discuss it again. The organic business of school boards and districts got in the way. And then the DRA set the rate and, and that was really frustrating. But I want everyone to understand that, that in terms of the amount of money that people will receive back at the end of the year, this could help to prevent a spike in the taxes next year. So everyone in the community needs to understand that the expenditures component of the budget is only one piece. We control the expenditures, we do not control the revenue. The revenue can vary dramatically. We received $4.3 million in tuition from Fremont. If for some reason they had a drop in the number of students that they send, that revenue would not exist. This money would offset that type of circumstance. Our goal is to flatten out the tax rate, to not have it increase sharply or decrease sharply, because whenever it decreases sharply, everyone's happy. Whenever it increases sharply, people are mad. And that's not good for culture. And if we want to have a culture of trust, we have to balance the fiscal responsibility that comes with keeping the tax rate as level as possible. So I just want you all to hear that although this occurred, we, we, it, it will probably end up being better for the flex, flexing of the taxes over the next two seasons anyway. And with the budget that we just presented with the .005% increase, if that's adopted by the community in the deliberative in past, we're going to be in great shape combined with the work that we're doing to reorganize. And I haven't even gone into the academic stuff, I won't touch that tonight, I'm so excited, I can barely even sleep. So we'll get to that later. Don't worry your eyes at me, Ellie, it's true, it's really exciting. So I'm calling her out. I don't have a gavel, so I have to call her out. But anyway, that's the deal is that we, we, yeah, we, we probably should have Jim done that in September, but I'm advising you as a board, if you're going to withhold that money, decide in June and then be done with it. Going back and forth with this is not a good game.
Okay. Revised academic, you, you also, you also did the special fund.
Yeah, he covered both in one.
All right, okay, here we go, revised calendar for next year.
Yeah, I just, uh, poor Dr. Heans, she got excited about the reorganization and when we, you adopted the calendar, there's actually two extra days, so we had to take them out. So we, 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 let's just say we sent it out to staff and got some very quick responses from the union that we added two days to the teachers' calendar, so we can't do that.
So you didn't have 367 days, you just had?
Thank you, it was usually 186 staff days and they were 188, which they very quickly pointed out to us. We even tried to keep one and work it out, but they said no.
You just need our approval on 188, right?
Exactly, perfect, yeah, if you want to pay for two more days, it's only like $100,000 a day. No, I just need you to?
It's 180, I thought.
Yeah, it's 186, so if you got, yeah, thank you, Ellie, that was nice, yeah, quick. Uh, no, if you guys could just approve this, it would be great, yeah.
Aaron enjoyed that one.
Yeah, that was funny.
Okay, second public comment.
No, no, wait, we need, we need them, I need you to motion.
Oh, to have that, yes.
And adopt that calendar that we shared with you.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'm going to have to look for the, the cows.
I said aye, and then I did this, waved my hand.
We get along, folks, I got to tell you. Okay. Now can I get on, move on?
Yeah, I hate to talk to you, it's your meeting.
Oh, it's, when did you give it to me?
Ask Ellie. Madam Chairman.
Moving right along.
Look at Johnny Carson show here.
All right, we need the second public comment, sir.
Second, thank you very much, second public comment. There's always one. Okay, Corey.
Mr. Mason. Good evening, Corey Mason, Newton, Hampshire, parent of a child in Flora Elementary, also one high school and one incoming. First and foremost, thank you very much for your presentation uh, this evening and the work that you all do. I'd like to request, first off, that the subcommittee minutes are posted online with the handouts. I see that these haven't been updated since June. And if you know, as you all know, these meetings are not audio recorded or video recorded. So if you could please get those updated, that'd be great.
Actually, they are video recorded now and on their own YouTube page, yep, and on the, on the website. You can watch any subcommittee meeting.
Even better, but I'd still like the handout. When you presented the 2020, the budget this evening, there was a slide in which superintendent, you said something, uh, was the 2020, 2021 default budget, uh, proposed operating comparison. You stated, "We cannot do it with less." My question is, what can you not do less with? This challenges me because when I heard that, I'm simply thinking that there are three board goals and two of them have been on the listing of goals for a couple of years now. This challenges me because two of the three goals are related to facilities and campus improvements. The other is to complete the 2018, 19 goal three mapping outcomes and explore report card options. Let me go back to the ISA update this evening where we heard from board member Mahoney, I heard that Ms. Mahoney state, "The ISA committee reviewed the available performance data. The results indicated that," and again, this is paraphrasing, "needs for improvement in all areas is indicated. Math is in need of critical improvement." My point being here, during the budget presentation this evening, the word student achievement did not come up, two words, student achievement did not come up once. This challenges me because I, again, and pains me because as a person who moved to this community, I'm sorry, I'm just getting emotional here, this pains me as a community member with children in the school system. Research shows that what you monitor gets done. So you guys are getting done, the facilities changes. That's great. That's called capital improvement plan, push those to the side. Long story short, again, I moved to this town because it was progressive and blazing a path in academics. We set the standard nationwide for performance assessments. Furthermore, during the tax impact report, superintendent, you indicated that since you've been here and you've done great things, there has been $1 million returned. My question is, would these funds have helped fund closing the student achievement gaps that was spoke of earlier this evening? Again, research shows that what you monitor gets done, so I challenge the board to start monitoring student achievement.
Once going twice, all Ayes.
Um, on the first slide that, um, the super, I'm sorry, Annie Collier Newton, um, on the first slide that the superintendent showed, it showed the um, depression and suicide rates and, and preventions and, and that kind of thing. Is that from, I know you don't do Q and A, but is that this year or is that last year's data? I know there was one done.
That is from the most recent student self-report, which is now from my first school year here.
Okay.
So we will have, that's why I was saying those slides will get updated and I'm glad you asked, I meant to mention that, that that's from the youth risk behavior survey that we presented at the end of my first year.
Bless.
Uh, I'm, thank you very much, Ellie, I'm, I'm thinking 18, 19, 2018.
I, I thank you, thank you for that. I really hope that that will be updated. I hope that what, much of the one-on-one um, relational building that's going on with kids in the high school, with Ms. Levitt and Mr. Dawson and Mr. Stack and everybody really working on that, that, that will improve that. And I'm really looking forward to that. That's a measurable outcome, I would like to see in the district. So, thank you.
Kristen Stogren, Kingston, I would just like to kind of build on what Annie just said. And we're addressing suicide, depression in the high school age, but is there something in the younger years, the middle school, even what will be the fifth and sixth graders? I don't know um, how much, it hasn't gotten a lot of publicity and I think I've probably only seen it because I have a friend whose daughter was severely bullied in the Timberlane District as like a 10-year-old. Um, in the last month, there have been several 10-year-old kids. One of them even convinced his sister to kill herself because he didn't want to do it by himself. So um, you know, it's, it's not just a problem at the high school level, the bullying seems to be a consistent problem in middle school. So um, I would love to see something going on. I know it's a hard topic at middle school age and even at elementary school age. But, you know, for the counselors and the teachers and whatnot to kind of be aware of that stuff as well at the younger ages, I think would be helpful and it would be more easy, I guess, to address as they get a little bit older, but just to kind of, like I said, build on what she said. And I think that we should be paying attention to this at the younger ages as well. I'm sure that your slide probably doesn't address the younger kids, but.
I'll just simply respond and so that the public is clear that the students only take the youth risk behavior survey at the high school level. So I only had clear data to share for that, but it is certainly being addressed at all levels.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Cheryl?
Thank you, Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. I'd like to thank the administration for preparing the uh, buzz, budget proposal tonight. I'm sure that a, a lot of work went into it, a lot of thought. This is a difficult time that we're going through as a district. That being said, um, I felt very disappointed that I was not able to ask clarifying questions. The presentation was given at rapid speed and very difficult to be watching, looking up at the screen and then trying to take notes. When I ask a question in public, as our superintendent often says, I ask a question in public because I want the public to hear the answer. It's not my personal question. And I felt very disappointed and disenfranchised tonight in not being able to ask questions in public. I can call anybody I want on the phone, but if we want to talk about transparency, then the public needs to hear the answers. Thank you.
This is, this is not appropriate because there's a process that's adopted by the board in Budcom, and I want to be clear for the public, that Mrs. Gannon voted to adopt that process. And that process is, is that we present the budget this evening, the board in Budcom review the budget and send their questions to the Budcom chair and the school board chair. And all questions are answered in public, all. In fact, one year I did 135 questions. I can't even remember how many slides, they're still on the web. So Mrs. Gannon, I'm not going to debate this with you, but what you just said is not true and I'm not comfortable with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Christine Cowden, Kingston. And I just had two quick points that I wanted to talk about that just kind of popped up to me. Thank you, Mr. Uh, I can't even, for bringing up the parent focus group, somewhat part of the, the BAKI one. Um, I think that it's going to be really good and it was kind of enlightening for all the, I'm on the BAKI one, for the memorial parents to come and see it. I made the suggestion that hopefully at some point, we'll get to go see the memorial school, because it did bring up a lot of questions. So I'm hoping that um, that's something that people take kind of seriously because it brought up a lot of questions for the memorial parents coming here. So hopefully going there, we'll be able to see, because I've never been there. So I'm, I really hope that we get to do that. Another thing that kind of raised some flags for me tonight during your presentation was just that you said that you have a lot on your plate and this reconstruction, reconfiguration, all of this is a huge undertaking and I understand it. Um, but when we started talking about like security and everything that goes into uh, the security piece at the memorial school, you said that you have a lot going on and I just hope that somebody else maybe has that part on their plate because with the climate and everything that's going on today, maybe it's just the way that you phrased it, it just kind of sounded like you're doing this right now and we need to deal with that at a later date. So I'm just hoping that somebody has the security piece on their plate for that. And I, I'm sure somebody does, but it just, I, it didn't sound, it just didn't come out right, maybe, so.
No, no, thanks for speaking. I, I'll just clarify quickly that, that this is important, that Mr. Angel is working hard on that. The security, we meet monthly with a huge committee of superintendent's um, safety advisory team, which includes members from uh, the federal level, the state level, the county level, and the local level. And we, the, the plan for the memorial entrance has been in the works for over five years. It is something that would be a really helpful with regard to security, but it is not necessary to run the school. The school is safe the way it's set up. It would be safer if we moved the entrance. So I just want everyone to know, I'm all for doing it. I want to be clear about that. I, I'm all for doing it. We can't take that on today with everything else that we're doing, but it is definitely right on the front burner and Mr. Angel is actively working on it, getting architects, getting drawings, getting ready, right? So I need you to know that we're not in any way saying that it's, that it's not important, we just have to take things in steps. And the first step is to get the high school settled with regard to the facilities needs and then right behind that, the memorial entrance is right on the, on the front of the, I'm hoping to have it done for September, but I can't promise you that.
But you're saying that it's safe for the kids, it's?
It is safe, it is safe today.
But that's, that's not what we're hearing from you.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that?
Yeah, I understand, it just sounds like there's so much going on with the reconfiguration and the structure, I just want to make sure that, you know.
Safety would be improved if we moved the entrance to the front of the building. But the building has a, a clearly defined lockout system that people cannot get through without being buzzed into the main office. The real problem is visibility. The secretary can't see the front door unless she looks in the camera. Plus, if you think about where the location of the building is currently, it's in the Plus, if you think about where the location of the building is currently, it's in the center of the building, it's always safer to have the location at one end of a long building. So certainly, there are many things that would make any organization safer, but it is totally safe and I feel completely comfortable with the building. Right? I, I, I certainly think that it would be great to move the entrance, it would be great for many reasons. But is it something that's an emergency that needs to be done right now? Even when the initial report was done five years ago, it wasn't an emergency.
That building is old.
That building is old. So I certainly, I want you to know that I feel okay with it, but it would be better if we could move it, and we are going to work really hard to move it, I just want you to know that.
Okay.
We, we want it done.
Hi, I'm Crystal Brown from Newton, and just to speak to the, getting the people in the opposite schools. Um, as PTO president, we actually met a bit, uh, some of the board members yesterday, and we're doing crossover events, I can't speak specifically for what the BAKI boosters are doing, but I know in January we're gonna do a Stop Your Mascot event. So we're inviting both schools to kind of come and get in the building and have these positive experiences before they start, so.
That's really good, thank you, I didn't know that, thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Seer from Kingston. I just want to make a quick note about the, um, budget committee, um, appointment, subcommittee, where-
Excuse me, but that's budget committee, this is the school board?
No, it was on the agenda tonight, and I'd like to speak to it, please.
I don't think it was on the school board.
Pete, Pete, I just want to make a statement for the public.
I get it, but I, I'm just trying to move the, move the meeting along.
It'll be very brief.
That was, that was a vote by the budget committee, not the school board.
More brief than anything else that's going on here tonight.
Well, the point is, it was a vote by the budget committee, not the school board.
And I'm speaking to the RSA, which you-
The RSA has to do with, I understand what you're saying, but I also have to keep it pure to the rules. Yeah, go ahead, what you got in here?
She was a part of the school board when Larry made his report on the budget committee.
I accept your argument, I have no, I just want, I'm, I gotta tell you folks, if you haven't figured out, I'm verbal, I think verbally, and I was trying to come up verbally with a way to let her do it, but don't not get jammed up by someone else saying, "Why did you let her talk about school board stuff?" I mean, you, you, Annie, we're both chairman, you know what I mean, right? Yeah, go ahead, Mary, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable now.
Thank you, Pete, thank you, Annie. The point I'm trying to make is that, in the three years that I've served on the budget committee, there have been, or in the past two years, there have been three instances where the role of the at-large candidate has come into play in appointing a vacancy, a replacement for a vacancy. And a couple of times it's been contested. Um, and I just want the public to know that, um, several people have gone to our local state representatives, myself included, to seek clarification, um, through legislation because we all know that Sanborn has come up, um, at the center of case law, much to our chagrin. You know, we don't want it to happen again. And I, as the at-large member, I'm perfectly fine with whichever way they decide, but I've already received a response from one of the state reps in District 13, Ken Wyler, who said that, um, the period for filing House legislation may have passed, but I know Ms. Collier has contacted her, um, folks in Newton, and he is going to be looking for a friendly amendment that he can attach this to to get clarification for this so it doesn't come up again. Um, and he said, and in the event he can't find that, um, avenue, that he is going to, um, find a Senator to sponsor some kind of an amendment to RSA 67133 to make it clear for everybody, because if it's happened three times in the last, or two, three times in the last two years here, it's certainly happening in other, um, what are we, community?
Districts.
District, well, cooperative districts. And so I just want for the record, for the, for the public to know that, that, um, and that's part of the reason why we agreed to say, look, we, we didn't do anything wrong, it's not a legal issue. It was a legal opinion that was rendered for our subcommittee, and we decided rather than be a distraction to the district, rather than disenfranchise our new colleague, Ms. Matias, by not allowing her to be part of this process, that we were gonna go ahead and concede and allow a revote without my participation. But going forward, the hope is that the role of the at-large member will be clarified for everybody because they've taken this call to action very seriously. Thank you.
Anyone else? No, okay. Uh, other business? Next any agenda? Anybody? Yes, no?
Policies.
Pardon?
Policies.
Oh, could we do those?
Well, that, that, that's what I was gonna bring up because it's a joint one, but I wanted to, okay.
That'd be okay?
Is that okay if we go another week on that? Because the next, the next one is the joint committee. I don't know how, Annie, could you give me a ballpark idea, how long do you think that it lasts? Do you think it'll last almost to two hours, or?
Honestly, Pete, it's gonna depend on the number of questions that come in.
Okay, all right.
We have no way of knowing until the 15th, but by the time you are setting your agenda, we have missed-
Well, I, I want the board to give me anything they want, and, and what I'll do is I'll, I'll have that penciled in, and if it looks like a short meeting, we'll go with policies.
We have what to do, so that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Because he and I set the agenda on Thursdays.
Peter?
Yes.
And, uh, uh, do we want to have a first read on the, on the, at least to have them, to have read them? And it, I don't know if there's anything controversial or not, but we may be able-
But I think we've got, what, 20 of them?
We have about 20 policies, and most of them are pretty simple to understand, they're not controversial. But you do need time to read them through, so hopefully I'll forward them to you soon and you can begin looking at them.
I don't see any reason not to try.
I, I, I think Annie was absolutely correct, let's see how the questions are, how much time we have, and absolutely, and anything else on, anybody wants to put on the agenda?
I know, Dr. Brown would just not be dealing with policies over Christmas.
Okay.
They never end.
Okay, so the next announcement then, I guess that's next. The Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be a joint meeting with the budget committee to be held on Thursday, that's a change, folks, Thursday, November 21st, 2019, from 7:09 PM in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School, 17 Danville Road, Kingston, New Hampshire. I now need a motion to go into non-public, Larry?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into non-public session for RSA 91-A, colon, 3, Roman number 2.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Roll call.
I know, I'm waiting to get Jamie to tip heads you, Jamie?
Aye.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, unanimous. Aaron, don't go anywhere yet.
You must be, you must be the topic.
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm gonna talk to the Superintendent, we may not need you for the next one if it's a joint committee. If you want to come, certainly you can.
Okay.
But I don't want to force you to be here if it's gonna be just on the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up to you, and if you'd like a budget book, we'll give you one, but we didn't print one because we just didn't know if you'd really want to go through it one by one.
I probably wouldn't understand anything in there anyways.
Yeah. If you want anything, we'll give it to you.
So if we see you, we'll see you, and if we don't, that's okay.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind, thank you.
Yeah, all right.